It is 5:57 PM. We are going to go ahead and start the meeting. And we please have a little call.
Mayor Walter.
President.
Vice Mayor Woolridge. Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maria. We are going to begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to open up our call to the public. Our call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and for legal matters. Do we have any call to the public requests?
Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm closing call to the public at this time. We are going to take our agenda just a little bit out of order. We are going to begin with item number seven, which is the consent agenda. I'd like to remove item A from the consent agenda, so I'm going to start with B, proclamation declaring October 15th to 21st, 2017, as Cities and Towns Week 2017. Item C, approval of the initial term extension of the lease addendum between the Town of Florence and Wiegent Law Offices at the Bruin Camp Building until October 31st, 2018. D, ratification of the election of the Cody Linderoth as an employee representative on the Town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Police Local Board for a period of four years. E, authorization to enter into a contract with Protec Environmental Incorporated to provide sewer line cleaning in the amount not to exceed $95,450. F, approval of September 5th and September 18th, 2017 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. And item G, receive and file the following boards and commission minutes, May 11th, 2017 Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. Is there anybody from the public or from council that would like any item removed from the consent agenda at this time? Okay, can I please have a...
I'll make a motion that we approve all items on the consent agenda except item A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item A is a special proclamation, and it was originally intended to be one of the first presentations of the evening. We do have some special guests with us in the audience as well. We have Nancy Larson, who is with Kent Volkmer's office, the Pinal County Attorney. She is their community liaison, as well as Sheriff Mark Lamb from Pinal County Sheriff's Office. Would both of you meet me at the podium so I can present this proclamation?
I'm going to read this to the audience. A longer one.
Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive problem that affects one in four women and one in seven men in Arizona, and stands in direct opposition to our number one priority of protecting Arizona families and communities, and...
Whereas in Arizona, every 36 minutes, an officer responds to a domestic violence incident with a child present, and every 19 minutes, an arrest is made. These numbers are tragic because domestic violence impacts our families, communities, schools, and workplaces on a daily basis, and...
Whereas this is an issue that affects all ages, races, religions, socio-economic backgrounds, and education levels, and ending violence in home, at work, and in the community requires vigilance and dedication from every part of our society. We all have a responsibility to know the signs and to help the victimized and vulnerable and to speak out against it wherever we can, and...
Whereas during the month of October, victim advocate groups, centers, service workers, and many other organizations come together to connect those who worked to end violence, to celebrate those who have survived, and mourn those who have died because of domestic violence, and...
Whereas the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family hosted the Third Annual Lighting Arizona Purple Event in the State Capitol, and lit the Capitol Dome purple as a symbol of Arizona's dedication to ending domestic violence, and launched the month-long Lighting Arizona Purple Campaign. Governor Douglas A. Ducey encourages Arizonians to stand with him as we send the unwavering message that domestic violence can't stop, and invites everyone to join in this effort by lighting their homes purple, and...
Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with domestic violence survivors, to celebrate the progress made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to reducing domestic violence in their communities.
Now therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, by virtue of authority vested in me, do so hereby proclaim and declare October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in support of this worthy cause, will have the Town Hall lit purple for the remainder of October 2017 to help raise awareness, and do hereby call upon all citizens to light their home purple in support of this effort. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and affix the seal of the Town of Florence, Arizona, the 16th day of October 2017.
Would you like to say anything?
You know, we, uh, this is a big issue for us. When we did a video at the start of the month, there was already 39 deaths in the state of Arizona. I can tell you for a fact, knowing what some of the cases we've had in the county, we're well beyond that now. I wouldn't be surprised if we're up closer to 50 at this point. And it's a shame that in the one place where you should be able to have trust and complete, feel that you're safe, and feel that you're around people that you don't have to worry about this, this is a serious breach of confidence, not only with spouses, but also with the children. So as a sheriff's office, we continue to stand and work hard against domestic violence. We continue to look for opportunities and ways that we can combat this, and hopefully reduce, if not eliminate, domestic violence in Arizona.
Thank you. Domestic violence is all about power and control. It's not an anger management situation. It's not a matter of someone drinking too much alcohol, or maybe taking drugs. Those things will exacerbate the situation, but it's all about power and control. And all of you in here know someone who is a victim of domestic violence, even if you don't know it. You just do statistically. One of four women is a victim or will be a victim in her life, and one out of seven men is or will be a victim of domestic violence. So it might be your next-door neighbor. It might be the person you sit next to in church. It might be your doctor. It might be law enforcement. It might be your best friend. But just be aware of it. That's why we're so grateful for you actually having a proclamation to bring awareness to this situation.
Thank you, and I also want to recognize our Vice Mayor and council members for also being supportive of this cause as well.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6A is a public hearing on a change in acquisition... Oh, I apologize, I need to go back to 7A. With that, we need a motion to accept the proclamation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proclamation under 7A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6A is a public hearing on a change in acquisition of control liquor license application received from Robert Coleman Sprouse, Giant Store 647, Ms. Maria Hernandez.
Madam Mayor and Council, the Clerk's Office received an application for a change in responsible party for the Giant Store Number 647 located at 520 North Pinal Street. The Clerk's Office posted the notice of public hearing for 20 days prior to the public hearing in accordance with state statutes. Management was also notified of the October 16th public hearing. At this time, the Clerk's Office has not received any comments, and we ask that you please go on ahead and, excuse me, we ask that you recommend approval following the opening and closing of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that has any questions regarding this item? Any members of council? With that, we... With that, we're going to open the public hearing. There is no questions, no comments. Would anybody like to come forward? Closing the public hearing. Okay, and... This is marked for an action item, so we do need a motion for approval.
Make a motion to accept the change in acquisition of control liquor license application received from Robert Coleman Sprouse, Giant Store 647, located at 520 North Pinal Parkway, Florence, Arizona, and for the council... No, that's it. And to approve this license.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6B is another public hearing on a change in acquisition of control liquor license application received from Robert Coleman Sprouse, Giant Store 650 this time, located at 649 North Pinal Parkway, Florence, Arizona, and for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license. At this time, we're opening the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that has anything they'd like to say? Any members of council? Closing the public hearing. With that, we need a motion for recommendation.
I make a motion that we approve the change in the acquisition of the control liquor license application received from Robert Coleman Sprouse at Giant Store Number 650 located at 649 Pinal Parkway, Florence, Arizona.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item C is our update on the Q and building. Mr. Smallridge, how are you this evening?
Good.
Good, thank you very much.
Stephen Smallage, owner of the Happy Adobe in town. The Q and building has gotten a stucco facelift on the outside, safety glass put in all existing windows, doors. For the historical committee, he asked to keep the original doors and windows and stuff in the building. I tried to oblige on that. The rest of the work came to a standstill between Gilbert, which is no longer here in town. I could not get any type of help from him or permits, other than through Jason when I done, I guess it's called the lathing on the outside. It was just a... I don't know. The town officials elected him, and I can't help that his manner and marks was not in my best interest. We could not move forward with it. I have talked to Chris since I have come back to Alabama, I was in Alabama on vacation. Lisa called me and asked me to try to meet with him previously to this meeting. I didn't know Monday was a holiday, so we didn't get to meet until Friday. I've been talking to Chris about this, and one of the problems was, is I believe that the H-Stack was deceived, and in thinking that the existing building, the historical adobe was going to be kept, but in my architect, he wanted it knocked out and replaced with block. I wanted to do a green wall on the inside, and then they said that was change in the architectural... I mean, Jason, Jason was good with changing it, but Gilbert was not. Then they suggested that I pour concrete in the void in the adobe, which is just not possible.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
What do you mean by a green wall on the inside? Are you telling me like the color green, or...
No, it's a wall on the inside that's made out of adobe. It has a void in it.
Okay.
And it was suggested to pour concrete in that to make it stable, but all that's going to do is just make the exterior of the facade more vulnerable to pressure. I just couldn't come to any type of agreement with them, and not on my half, because I'm be willing to do anything. I'm even told, Chris, that I just knock a wall out, even though it's not what the historic committee wants. I told him I'd knock a wall out and do block. But it's not what H-Stack approved. I mean, so I'm in a caught dilemma between two sides of the Town of Florence that does not meet in the middle, and tried, I don't know, because of the people that were in place in the town, it just hasn't come, it just hasn't gotten where it should have been. I should have been granted that permit. Well, I went to H-Stack, we agreed that I'd have the meeting, and I would be able to start on the building immediately after approval. I was five and a half months before I ever got a permit. That means I'm five and a half months short of what the town granted me. So now, I go back and try to work with him some more, and he's just... It just wasn't, just no working with Gilbert whatsoever. I've even went to the Assistant Town Manager, and we had a meeting and tried to work things out, but as soon as it got passed off to Jason, which he told me I could do a few things on it, then all of a sudden Gilbert said, "No, I'm not good with that, because I want you to hire another architect." This architect I hired, even though I might not agree with all of it, is state certified. He is a state licensed architect and structural engineer. I wanted to preserve as much of the historical building as possible, and I still do. But if I can't get the town, which is not you, by the way, but the representatives that you put in place, if I can't get them to work with me, and I've been over a year and a half trying to get this done, what am I supposed to do? I don't want it, and you know, mine has ended up, just like Cody's up here. Mine's ended up, just like the building up here beside the, I don't know the name of the building, but the one in town where it burnt down, they started to stucco the outside. It's just stucco. I mean, you know, it's always something for someone's approval. And I guess my comment is, where has our common sense gone in town? Where is our people gone that can walk into a building and say, "You've got an electrical cover off the building over there. Light fixture is loose in the ceiling. You have a water stain in your ceiling. Get someone to put electric, put a cover on that. Go ahead and fix that window sill over there that's partially rotted, and repair the ceiling and make sure the roof doesn't leak, and bring me a piece of paper that says, well, you had a roofer up there to take care of." Where is the common sense in town going to on all these buildings? I mean, I can throw this thing aside. It's not going to bother my life at all. But I came to you and asked you, I wanted to save this building, and ever since that day, I've been held up. For five and a half months, I had to argue with Mark and Gilbert, and this is not what I stepped in to do. And I don't think any town official should put people in place like that that have actually no... You took someone off the street with no engineering degrees, no structural management stuff, no knowledge of anything, and trying to tell, get them to tell someone where a tuba six needs to be, or how a roof rafter is designed, or how stable a truss should be, whether it's two feet apart or 16 inches apart. Them guys didn't know anything, but you're expecting them to tell me what to do. And I have an architect that says what to do, and they don't want me to do it, even though I might not agree with Thompson, you know. But I would like to have the opportunity, if at all possible, to work with Chris and get this remedied, even if I've got to knock out that historic wall and put a block wall in it. I'm not trying to save, I'm not trying to make it a historic building in town. I'm trying to save the history of town, but I want to put a business in it. I've been held up for almost two years on this. I could have, when we made the agreement and I was going to go in, I had my infrastructure, my workers in place, and they held me up for five and a half months. Everything changes. Every day, something changes. You know, I have an RV park I run, I have three other stores I run. I mean, I'm not a stand-at-home business or what, you know, I'm just not there. And I just think that I need to have time to talk to the council about this, because I don't like disparaging someone's credibility when they're not here to defend themselves. And that's virtually what I'm doing. But I would like the opportunity for the council, and then my time does run up next month, run out, to work with Chris and see if we can come to some type of agreement on this wall and, I don't know, laminated beams, which aren't an issue anyway.
Have you had a chance to talk with Chris yet?
Friday.
Friday. How did that conversation go?
Today, the last text I sent to him was about 30 minutes ago, or maybe a little longer. And that is all the chance I have had to talk to him.
Chris, from your perspective, tell us a little bit about like the history, what we need to know as a council, as well as, you know, how you guys are working together.
Before he starts that, I'd like to make a comment. I'm glad you owned up to the fact that you're talking about people who are no longer here. Okay, I didn't interrupt you, so let me just finish my statement. But what's disappointing is that you didn't reach out to council members if you were getting, you know, stonewalled for five and a half months. I didn't hear from you. I don't know if anybody else heard from you.
I asked...
But that's what we're here for.
Lisa, I was talking to Lisa, and she tried to intermediary through the deception that was given by Gilbert, which we brought some of it out in a meeting that was said was not true. Paperwork fell out of his folder, and there it was. So I was trying to go with the top of the town, which I presume that's where I was supposed to go, because they kept saying, "Let me talk to them. Let me see if I can get this straightened out with planning and zoning. And let me..." And that's what I tried to do.
Well, just let me say for you and for anybody else, if you're being stonewalled for that long, then that's what we're here for, and you need to reach out to us if you're not getting satisfaction with staff, because for me to hear that is very disappointing. And of course, those people are not here to defend themselves, so I have no way of checking that, but that, you know, that kind of defeats the whole process of why we sit where we sit.
And it does, and all I can say to you is you can ask Lisa when she returns back to work after her leave.
Well, I'm not saying I don't believe you, but I'm just saying I wish you had reached out to us. I'm not saying I don't believe you, but you know, we're here for that reason.
I was in contact with the historical committee through this, parts of them. They knew what was going on, and they were trying to talk behind the scenes, not to break a big deal, I mean, but it just, it just never got there. And I probably should have come to each one of you personally, but this, I was trying to deal with the people that you put in place to run this town. You done that, or previous predecessors to you, or whatever. So my, I'm supposed to work with them. I'm not supposed to sneak around beside someone's back and say, "So-and-so's picking on me like a little boy, you know, and he's not treating me fair." That's not the right thing to do.
And I do want to clarify, we don't put them in place.
Well...
We do not oversee day-to-day operations. That's our town manager right there.
Okay.
And Human Resources Director right there.
Whoever hires them and puts them in place, their issues and stuff, I've never had a chance to meet with the town manager. I've always met with Lisa. So their problems are set in place by the town, whoever hires them. To me, you're the representatives of the town, you're the backbone of the town, you hire the town manager, you do all that. So to me, you are the town. Okay?
And that's why I come to us if there's future problems. Let's figure out what's going on here and how we're going to move forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I guess as a general background, I believe, based on the city clerk's office, I've been giving every single piece of paper on this project, from the meeting minutes of H-Stack to some individual emails, to the reports that were done, and I even spoke to Jeff Swan, who was the original person mentioned in some of the reports as to, I guess, the town's consultant, just to take a quick look at the project. So I think I've got a pretty good understanding of the project. Without boring everyone with a lot of technical details, the two meetings that we've had in person, and the small amount of conversations we've had outside of physical meetings, it's been positive. There was one question that I think that was the, what engineering would call, critical path items, and the critical path items to this project is the structural report. The structural report indicates for moving nine feet of the adobe wall, the northern adobe wall, and completely replacing it with CMU block wall. At the time of our first conversation, Mr. Smallage did not necessarily, as he's indicating right now, did not agree with his own structural engineering report. He'd like to save the adobe, and again, I want to speak just in facts. I told him, "You have the opportunity to hire any structural that is within the state of Arizona registrant. You can call anybody. You chose your structural engineer. This is his report. So we can only allow you..." This is a commercial building that requires a registrant to perform any structural analysis on a wall that was shown to be, I guess, listing at one point, and determined by his own structural engineer is not structurally sound. And so that CMU block wall is the result of his structural engineer's report, and we have it, I think it's in your council package. There's a letter in your council package as well as a drawing. The drawing appears to be unstamped, I'm not sure why, but maybe it was meant to be just as an exhibit. The state board should require that to be sealed, though. Unfortunately, it's not. Not to worry about that tonight.
On that, on that report, mine shows a stamp?
It is, but the exhibit is not sealed. And under the state board, this should also be sealed, because it represents engineering. Either way, that's, it's not important. That's not important. My point to this all is, is that this was approved as part of the July 22nd, 2015 meeting minutes by H-Stack. So he has every ability, based on what I understand and what I see, to go through with the replacement of that adobe wall with the CMU block wall. He also has the ability to hire a separate structural engineer, which I'm not characterizing. He said, "I'm not willing to do that." And I said, "That's fine. You don't have to hire a different structural engineer." But you, your options are limited to what is in your structural engineering report. So speaking and addressing the green wall, that is not in the structural engineering report. And so I want to make it clear to everyone, in building safety, we do not have that latitude that word keeps coming up, that discretion to advise people how to make structural changes to their building, nor would we want that liability, nor responsibility, on any level. That is why the codes require... That is why the codes require a registrant. So he has a registrant, they've performed that. So I want to make it clear that if that is what's wanting to be performed, we can approve that rather simply. But we cannot, there is no ability, there is no discretion for a meat in the middle, there isn't. And I'm not, again, trying to characterize it, it's just, that's just not the ability under the codes, under the ICC codes, we don't have that ability. If he wants to move forward with that, then he can. And there's some other, there's some other, I guess, approved items. I don't see anything that, I mean, unfortunately, you're speaking to a person, or I'm speaking to a person who loves challenges. So I see this as another opportunity for me, again, to take something that wasn't going so well and get it across the finish line. So if you were hoping that I was going to speak disparagingly, that's just not my nature. I'm an optimist, and I look forward to, again, working with him on the project. But I don't see anything that's an issue. The only thing is, he's adamant, and I'm adamant as well, on the issue of the structural engineer. As it relates to this, there is no real meat in the middle, unless he wants to hire someone, again, to do something, there is no ability for us to just write something down on a piece of paper and move forward. He has a report, we can approve that report and issue a building permit on that. And as far as I understand, that, that improvement was able to be performed based on this July 22nd, 2015 HDAC meeting minutes. I understand that the replacement of adobe with CMU block wall are going to make some people in the audience cringe, or on TV cringe, but I didn't, I did not draft the structural engineering report. I can only approve what comes across my desk.
And from what I'm understanding, the way the adobe is now, it's not structurally sound, nor is there a fix for it to be, which is why the adobe was cleared through the structural engineer to be turned into a block wall. So essentially, that's able to save the building, whereas if you just left it as it is, it would not be able to be saved.
I, I don't want to be that specific on the entire building. That's not what's in the report, it talks about that wall.
But for that specific wall.
And so addressing what he brought up on 363 North, that's a very similar project, very analogous, and once again, the same type of issue. A structural engineer was required. It was not Mr. Thompson, it was Mr. Tress Warner that performed that. And the same thing, once again, that those, those reports were found to be accurate by staff while we're waiting on HDAC approval. But the same thing, is once those reports are written, we will move forward on approving those on October 26th, after the day after HDAC. So very similar process. Structural engineer makes a written report, and they are going to use adobe to fix that wall. And my opinion was, Mr. Smallage, you can work with the same engineer, I'll give you his contact information, if you want to use adobe to save the adobe, I'm sure Mr. Tress Warner would come up with a resolution to do the similar fix. But he does not want to have another structural engineer on this project.
So HDAC already approved, from my understanding, that one wall to be block, correct?
For this specific project.
He's shaking his head no, so I really need to have clarification on this.
HDAC was deceived in that meeting that the adobe would be kept on the outside, the original adobe would be kept on the outside and stuccoed over. I mean, I don't have any of them here right now, because I didn't have enough time after I texted him, I couldn't get a couple of them to come down here and say, this is what was talked about at the meeting, we wanted the original finish on the outside. So I can't say, but I would love to have the city council get together and so we can make sure that we understand apples and apples and oranges and oranges, and all the great fruit.
I can still address, I can still address that issue. If the HDAC does not approve it, there is language in our code that will allow the council to basically act as the appeal to that decision. So it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily their ultimate say is that decision, it would be a council decision if.
If the structural engineer says that that nine foot section, we're not talking the whole building, just nine foot, to be replaced with cinder block, to bring it up to structural soundness, you're going to stucco over it, you're going to probably plaster inside, nobody will know if it's adobe or block. And I can't imagine that being a major hangup. If it, if you want to save the building, your own engineer says that that wall needs to be replaced. Simple as that. Pardon me?
I'm fine with it. I knocked the wall out and put the block in there, but I don't want HDAC deceived in what they believed that an adobe finish was going to be kept. I don't, I don't want to be the one to deceive them.
There isn't an adobe finish on it now, it's stuccoed.
Who else wants to go to those ladies and tell them, no, we're not going to keep the original adobe finish? That's fine.
Sure. It's, it's, it's stuccoed on the outside, you don't know if it's adobe or block or wood or what.
Well, I realize that.
Well, that's all I'm saying. You're saying, you, I don't know where you're coming up with the adobe on the outside, it's not, you don't see the adobe.
You go to the HDAC meetings, if you did, then you'd know what they talk about. And they wanted the adobe preserved on the stucco, even though you can't see the adobe, I didn't, I didn't, it wasn't my, me, it was Gilbert in there doing this, talking to these ladies, not me.
Well, then, HDAC needs to realize that whatever the structural engineer says, that's what we've got to live with. And if they want to save the building, we've got to do whatever we have to do to make it.
And just for the record, as Chris has already stated, we love the HDAC, they do wonderful work, but we have the final say.
And Mr.
Recommendations, and so.
And that's fine with me.
And they do know what they're talking about most of the time.
Someone will say that, and I can move forward, I'm good.
We don't want to just stall out this project, we're trying to come to a happy meeting so that we can move the process along, and I think that's our goal tonight.
And Mr. Billingsley.
I would like to share some facts tonight to council and the audience and the folks watching at home with respect to this. I'm going to read directly from the approval that was motioned by Chairman Adams, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and was approved for the design review of the Quinn Building, P&amp;Z case, or PZ case 15-43. Once again, that's July 22nd, 2015. Trying to figure out a place to read from.
You, you mean HDAC, though, right?
HDAC, yeah, but it's, it is case PZ 15-43. One, construction on the Quinn Building shall conform to the exhibit as presented on July 2022, 2015. I don't have a copy of that exhibit, but I'm sure Mr. Smallage does. Projects shall comply with all applicable town codes, interior standard, interiors standards for treatment of historic properties, Florence Townsite Historic District Preservation Guidelines, and all applicable building, fire, and engineering codes. Any exterior lighting on the property shall be in compliance with the applicable light control restrictions, and compliance with the HDAC Design Review Application Approval shall be required prior to issuance of the certificate, of final certificate of occupancy. The only other thing that was added by the commissioners was that they wanted to have, say, regarding any replica items to be placed on the building, i.e. doors, and wished to have the applicant answer some of their questions at a later date. So as you can hear, or as you notice from what I'm reading, they did approve this in July 22nd, 2015, and certainly stated all of the standards that had to be matched, including their own preservation guidelines, as well as the federal and the town historic guidelines with respect to this, and they wanted to have final say before CVO. So not only was it approved, but to your point, council member, they would have final say on outside finishes, et cetera, and you are correct, the building is stuccoed, it's not exposed adobe block at this time. Secondarily, a permit was issued for this building on 11/2, 2015. There was only one inspection that was done per request, and that was at 4/20, 2016, and this building permit expired at 10/20, 2016.
Now, the action item is later in the agenda. I was planning on presenting at that time, but I'm not sure I'll have much more to add, but.
Apologize, my microphone came off. Mr. Smallage, can you come back up to the podium, please? What is your intention moving forward? Do you have a timeline?
If, if the five and a half months I lost will be fine, to get it done. I mean, in his re, I just want to clarify, in his readings, they wanted authenticity on the building.
Right.
The block is not going to be, I just want everybody to know that, I don't want to be the bad guy out of this. So the block is not going to be authenticity. It'll, it'll structurally enhance that wall, I agree 100%, but I just want them to know that I'm not the one that done this. I don't, I don't want those ladies mad at me, okay?
Do you mind if I?
I can move forward on it, I'm ready, I mean, I've been ready. My, my garage and my home is full of stuff that should have been in that shop last year.
How much have you invested in the building already?
About 10,000.
Any members of council have anything that they'd like to?
Can I just ask some clarifying questions? So it sounds to me like some of your holdup between you and your structural engineer agreed that, that's like your path as far as you're wanting to keep it more historic with the adobe, and he wants to go more of modern technology with.
My holdup was with Gilbert. I'll just make that really clear. He's not here to defend him, but my holdup was with Gilbert.
But when I hear from Chris.
It's a long time.
But the historic committee wanted that, that facade kept original.
But when I hear from Chris, it sounds like when the structural engineer comes in with their plan or their recommendations, then he has the, they review it, obviously, but then they have the right to approve or deny. So they don't go in and say, well, I like this piece, let's modify it from there, because they don't modify it, they don't change it, they don't want that liability. So it sounds like the things that you don't agree with, your structural engineer, are the things that he doesn't have the ability to change.
But Gilbert didn't want me to put the block wall in either, because he said HDAC wouldn't approve it.
Okay. I guess my question is.
I'm in the catch 22. I'm willing to knock the wall out, I don't have an issue with it. It's only a building.
Right.
It's the history of the building, it doesn't make any difference if it's adobe or block or it's wood.
Okay, so.
It's still a work, it's still a working building, and I'm fine with knocking it out.
My questions or concerns is that moving forward, if you have, if you've obviously looked at the full report, and is everything else in that report okay to go? Has everything else been approved by your standards, as well as by the town standards, so that all we're waiting on is permits and just to be approved, which sounds like everything should?
The only, the only thing that we have to move forward on is that block wall, the laminated beams, new electrical, and air conditioning.
Okay, and those are all addressed in the report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and those have all been up to your standards or what?
Maintenance on the roof and stuff, just maintenance, not replacing, like, anyway, maintenance on the roof, it's all existing right where it is right now, is, I mean, other than more cleaned up and recoded roof and all that type of stuff, is where it would fall.
Okay.
If there's anything else that has to be done, I'm not sure of. There was never a bathroom in it, there's a public bathroom next door, I don't believe historical, as long as the bathroom is provided within so many feet, I'm not sure about that. But I don't have an issue with that either, as long as I don't have to put in a handicap accessible bathroom, which takes up 100 feet out of a thousand square foot building. I mean, I don't, but I don't, I don't think, I'm not, am I wrong in that? Do we have to put a handicap bathroom in? I don't know, and I thought we'd discuss this.
Yeah, I guess that's the point I'm getting to, Chris, is you've obviously had a chance to look it over. Does everything appear to be in up and up, or is there anything that you would see as red flags or issues in the future?
I reviewed the documents that I had. Unfortunately, I don't, I didn't have a set of plans for the construction site, but a permit was issued, and I'd like to think that the previous staff was competent, but I didn't have that opportunity, that's not what I was assigned to do, I was assigned to see where we're at in progress. So since the permit did include lathe, plumbing, electrical, I believe that it would be easily able to move forward. What the permit did not include were the structural repairs. And based on, if he's willing to do what's in that structural report, we have an HDAC meeting on October the 25th, we can add this item to the agenda and reach back out to the HDAC to get clarification, to make sure that we're not upsetting anybody or misinterpreting the meeting minutes. We can do that, to determine if there is an issue. I don't see a problem, like you said, I don't see any red flags as of right now.
Okay.
But it was not a comprehensive review, to looking back at the plans, that's not what I was reviewing. It was already approved once, but it has expired, and we would have the opportunity to re-review the plans before reinstating the plans.
Yeah, just don't want to kick it down the road any further, I'd like everything to try to be as smooth, obviously, as possible, and want to make sure that, obviously, he's happy with the work leading, as well as from the staff perspective, making sure it's obviously appropriate and.
I don't see there's anything here that can't be resolved. I mean, the, the idea of an electrical permit, honestly, in my world, is a very small issue. Plumbing permit, very small issue, mechanical plumbing, I mean, mechanical permit, very small issue. These are, these are minor things, structural things become very difficult because of the latitude sometimes in a report doesn't kind of match up to conditions, so it can be a little bit more troublesome in that way. But honestly, this is, is or not, this is not a complicated project.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do you have anything else that you'd like to present or say?
No, thank you.
Are there, thank you, are there any other members or questions from council?
No, I, I.
Well, this is coming up.
It is, but for this presentation purpose, the different item is coming up.
We do have two board members from the HDAC committee, Chris Reed and Ms. Respec, they're, I can't recall your, Victoria, your married name now, but we do have them in attendance, and I know for a fact that Chris Reed would recall what happened. I, I cannot, in truth, recall what happened on this incident. All I know, it was presented, I was there also, so I don't know if you would want to come up and say anything, Chris?
Hi, Chris Reed. I, I don't remember the details, but if we voted to approve it, we voted to approve it, and I personally have watched that building not move forward and wondered why. And I, you know, I don't know about Gilbert, I mean, he's not here to answer whatever he, his opinion was, and I'm not sure, it just seems like there's some miscommunication. And, you know, it's too bad the, the permit has expired and we have to go through this again, but hopefully we'll be able to move forward with it. I, I can understand Mr. Smallage's frustration, but I'm not sure where it comes from.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to item eight, new business. Item A is Resolution Number 1646-17. This is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence-Pennell County, Arizona, which is approving the final plat for the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 24, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Mayor and council members, Polty Home has requested approval of the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 24. This area is in the Parkside area of the community. There are 84 single-family residential lots on 25.16 acres. The density for this unit is 3.37. The final plat of Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 24 currently shows that there are lots 30 through 34 that are within the FEMA flood zone AE. The town of Florence and Polty Home have agreed that there shall be no vertical construction until approval of the letter of map revision, revising the flood zone and establishing new boundary limits excluding the lots. The resolution that's attached to this document for the final plat will add an extra precaution to ensure that no homes will be constructed on the above-mentioned lots until the approval of the LOMAR. The neighborhood streets in this unit are designed and constructed at 42 feet wide. The preliminary plat was approved by the planning and, or recommended approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 5th, 2017. Public works and the fire department staff are in support of this, and the street names and addresses have also been approved by the town's GIS coordinator. Polty Home will construct the roadways within this subdivision. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
I was just going to make a comment, I believe both of these proposed plats are in Sun City. Even numbered units are typically in Sun City, and odd-numbered are in Parkside.
Apologize for that, they are Sun City. Thank you.
So any other member of council that'd like to say anything? Is there any other member of council that'd like to say anything at this time? Now, one of the, is there a representative from Polte that's in the audience this evening?
Hi, I'm Ryan Bettis.
Hi, Ryan, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, there's, we've always approved and we've gone by, you know, what has been set forward in the PUDs and working with the Town of Florence. Hang on. That's okay. Okay, I apologize for that.
No problem.
My concern is really with the street width. And the reason for that is recently, there's been a lot of parking on the street, and residents are parking on both sides of the street. Now, all parties really need to work in conjunction of one another. You have the building, you have the town, and you have the CCNRs. And when one of those areas fails one of the other areas, it can cause a safety hazard for the residents. So, when we're looking at the width of the streets, that's one of the concerns I have. The other concern I have is the length of the driveways. There's recently been some residents, and they've come to me personally, whereas one resident who lives a couple of blocks over had to sell his truck because it didn't fit in his driveway. It reached out into the sidewalk in front of him. So, as a builder, I don't know if you're able to take any of this feedback. I know for the driveway, for example, you can situate the house further back. Some driveways are longer than others. Maybe it's a communication issue between Polte and the sales department when they're, you know, selling the home. But it still doesn't alleviate the issue about the parking on the street and how that can be resolved. And the reason why this ties into this specific agenda item is if we're approving it and we're saying, "Okay, the streets are 42 feet wide," typically when people are parking on the streets, according to the research, they're about 48 at a minimum feet wide.
Yep, the street width is 42 to accommodate the five-foot sidewalks now versus before we did four-foot. The street section is still the same in all of Anthem at Merrill Ranch. The actual pavement has not increased.
Correct, correct. But the problem is before, it was always clear that nobody was parking on the street. But now, that's really not being enforced from the Polte side through the HOA.
Yes, we do enforce it through the HOA. There are tours, but we are limited by, we can't tell whose vehicle's parked there. We can't pull license plates by MVD. So, we see a car in the street, we write "That house violation" for that car. If they don't respond, we have no other means to just go arbitrarily find a resident that it may not be their car. So, it's a really tough situation we're stuck in with the HOA, and not having a Town of Florence code that says no street parking, it's been a big topic lately for us internally about the street parking scenarios.
Now, I would like to schedule a work session or have an agendized item specifically on this item.
Okay.
Brent, can you please put that on our next agenda? And if you could have a representative out, because we want to support you, and we want to work together between the Town of Florence, Polte, as well as the residents, because we also understand that there's situations where, you know, people grow and maybe you have four or five drivers and not enough room to park. We need to find those creative solutions to those situations. We also know that there's snowbirds that live throughout the community, and maybe we could, you know, while keeping their houses safe, parking in the driveway or coming up with a lot, something of that nature.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Billingsley?
We will schedule a work session at the next meeting to discuss it.
Okay. I do appreciate that. Like I said, if we always work together and communicate, it goes so much smoother.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1646-17, a resolution of the Town of Florence-Pennell County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 24 and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is Resolution Number 1647-17, which is discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence-Pennell County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 32 and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Mayor Walter, council members, again, this is Polte's request for approval of the final plat at Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 32. This is part of the Sun City community. There are 80 single-family residential lots on the proposed 24.24 acre subdivision. The density for this is 3.29. The neighborhood streets, again, are 42 feet. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 5th, 2017. The Town of Florence Public Works and Fire Department staff have reviewed it, and the town's GIS coordinator has reviewed the street names and addresses. Polte Home will construct roadways within this subdivision and maintain them until the end of the construction warranty. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Any member of council have any questions related to this item?
No.
Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1647-17, a resolution of the Town of Florence-Pennell County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit 32 and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, discussion approval, disapproval of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Town of Florence and Florence Artisan Acres LLC. And I see we have a representative in the audience, the owner and visionary, Mr. Harold Christ.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chris is here in case you have any questions. As you're aware, some time ago, town council entered into an agreement, specifically was recorded on April 26th of this year and approved on April 17th by council, to enter into a development agreement with Florence Artisan Acres LLC. That development agreement was very detailed in terms of responsibilities of the town and responsibilities of the developer. The project itself has been delayed by unforeseen circumstances, and Mr. Christ and I have been negotiating an extension of said agreement, specifically the Schedule of Performance that you'll see as the last page of what you have in the packet, also known as Schedule C in the original agreement. The one additional modification that needs to be made, and I hope that if you approve this, it could be part of your motion tonight, is to also amend Recital M to reflect December 31st, 2018, so that it's consistent with Exhibit C. That's all I have.
Okay. Harold, would you like to come up and say anything this evening?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I thank you for considering this request. The unforeseen circumstances have been called, a lot of the weather issues that have gone on around the country, the bids that we've gotten are, in some cases, twice what we had budgeted for. So, as we work through that, we finally have been able to select a contractor, but that only happened about two weeks ago. So, in putting those pieces together, we're getting close, but we're not quite there. We're working with APS, you've seen some of that work coming into town, some of that is involving us, and then with the Southwest Gas as well. So, we're starting the off-site work that we can get done and getting it into place while we go through the machinations of putting together all the things that go on with this. So, thank you for considering this, and we beg your indulgence.
Thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate your circumstance and understand.
Thank you.
Members of council, does anybody have any questions? Okay, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between Town of Florence and the Florence Artisan Acre LLC, and also the amendment of Recital M that was furnished to us as an amendment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're looking forward to an amazing project. Item 8D is discussion approval, disapproval that the-- I'm sorry, what?
Didn't we want to wait and do that one later?
No.
No? Okay, sorry.
Item D is discussion approval, disapproval that the execution, filing, delivery, and the full prosecution litigation to enforce the terms of the special warranty with the reverter between the Town of Florence and Stevens Smallage dated May 11th, 2015, recorded fee number 2015-031032, Assessor Parcel 200-49-0730, specifically the reversion provisions for the real property to automatically revest and revert in fee title to the Town of Florence on November 12th, 2017, and notices, filings, certificates, pleadings, correspondence, proceedings, agreements, and other documents as may be necessary or convenient related thereto is approved and authorized.
Brent?
Yes, Mr. Billingsley?
Things to add as part of council's consideration this evening, in our initial contract that was approved on May 11th, 2015, council had the opportunity to provide a one-time 180-day extension. That took place and was adopted by council January 17th of this year. Per the contract, as of November 12th, it would be a full expiration of the contract and a reversion back to the town. There is a way that the town can give a further extension, but as part of your motion, we need to explain what are the special circumstances that necessitate an additional extension. Sounds like we have Chris and Mr. Smallidge on the same page. I would, once again, let council know that you've already done a 180-day extension. We couldn't find that anything has been done in the last 180 days. Once again, that extension was provided on January the 17th, will expire November the 12th. Gilbert has been gone from the town for over 12 months. Mark has been gone from the town for over six months. Once again, there was a permit issued that has since expired, as well as an approval from the H-Stack.
Chris?
Do you--
Go ahead, Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, I want to ask Brent or maybe Chris, I don't know who would answer. If we, right now, it's still in effect until the 12th of November.
Yes, sir.
We've got another meeting between now and then, right?
Yes, sir. The 6th, I believe, is our next meeting.
Okay, I'm wondering if we table this and give Mr. Smallidge and Chris and whoever else we need to be involved, H-Stack, I don't know. If we can come up with a, an agreement and a permit and what needs to be done, and he can sit, you know, will agree to it, then I would like to, you know, see him complete it. We're not trying, you know, I don't want to see the town have to take it and then auction it off again. I'd like to see him complete it, but--
That's a motion, Councilman Hawkins, I'll second.
Well, no, it's not a motion yet, but I was just wondering--
Good motion to me. Sounds like a good motion to me to table it till the next meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just hoping there's enough time to, maybe for everybody to get together and see if we can get a--
If you don't want to make the motion, would you like me to make it, or you want me to second your motion?
I'll make a motion--
Thank you.
--to table this item till our next meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the table, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Mr. Smallidge, what I was going to say prior to the motion being made in past is we have the Historic Advisory Committee meeting that we talked about earlier on October 25th. I plan on attending, and I hope that we can see a way to bring the project forward and talk at the next meeting.
I'm ready to move forward. If Chris and I can, we'll do whatever we got, you know, I don't care about the wall. It's been an issue, but it won't be from now on as far as I'm concerned. So, if we can move forward on it, I'm good. I'm happy.
Well, whatever, not just that wall, there's other stuff, but, yeah, whatever it takes to get it done, okay.
I would expect to see some aggressive completion dates on this.
I couldn't hear you, I'm so sorry, council member.
I would expect to see some aggressive completion dates on this. We've gone on long enough.
Well, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. That's when we'll decide on that.
So, we'll have you present at the next meeting as well? We'll have that as an agenda item, and then we'll also bring it to the table like we did this time, and if you could have an outline of the dates and estimations, that would be very helpful.
Sure will. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is our managers' report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have a short list tonight. The first item I have is, I don't know if the public is aware, but last week, the town hosted the Tucson Electric Vehicle Association, and we hosted them over at the community center. They brought two vehicles down, as a matter of fact, the new Tesla X, is that what they call it? Tesla X as well as a Nissan Leaf that had a whole lot of miles on it and had been all over the United States. It was very interesting to sit down with the gentlemen and hear what and how they're promoting electrical, electric vehicles, as well as how the technology is approving and the additional technologies on the horizon. Hopefully, we had a number of people like myself that stopped by and looked at the cars and got educated on electric vehicles. So, I want to thank them for their time. We did invite them to come back at a future date, and I think that they will do that. Chris and, Chris and I were part of the same group and, as well as Jennifer. Secondarily, a number of months ago, it was reported that an open-meeting law complaint was filed against the town. I have a letter dated October 10, 2017. That open-meeting law complaint has been, what's the right term? Unfounded. It was, it was found to be unfounded. Lastly, I am happy to report at the last meeting, I saw several council members with distress when we were presenting the item regarding fire alarm downtown, in that we were turned down for our Community Development Block grant pertaining to individual taps at businesses downtown to facilitate fire sprinklers in buildings at a reduced cost. That was not approved, and we were unable to move forward. However, as of last week, we were approved for our CDBG grant, and specifically, it's going to go to fund as well as administer activities regarding waterline improvements, specifically what are main improvements to increase fire flows in town. So, we'll be very happy to work with the state in order to expend approximately $258,000 on that project. That's all I have.
Thank you. This is our second call to the public. At this time, we're opening call to the public for public comment. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say? Closing call to the public. Call to the council. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing at this time.
Councilmember Galen?
Yes, I'd like to thank Chief Strayer for the nice appreciation dinner that he held last week for the firefighters. It was very nice, and I just love to see the staff honored. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Anderson?
I'll second, thank you to the fire chief. It was a, it was a nice event. I also want to thank the county attorney and the sheriff for their domestic violence awareness meeting that they held at the courthouse. You know, this-- You know, this domestic violence is sort of something that we don't like to talk about, right? But it happens, and we need to make people aware of it. And hopefully, making people aware of it can help resolve some of those issues. So again, I want to thank the county for what they did. I want to thank the mayor for what she did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Larson?
Like John said, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is something that's very important to me and something I think it's great that we're doing, the proclamation as well as the pins and everything being purple. But more importantly, I want to make sure that the people that are watching this, as well as the people that might be in this room, are aware of the resources that are available to them. So as this platform, I want to make sure that people have the phone number for the National Domestic Violence Hotline, which is 1-800-799-7233. I think that's important, that everybody knows that these resources are available. And also, to find your local shelter, you can call 1-844-SAFE, S-A-F-E-D-V-S. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of those resources and that it's not just about the purple pins. It's about making sure that people are safe and that they have the resources available to them to get out. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Walridge?
I would just agree with Becky and John on the Fire Department's first annual dinner, and they're actually going to make people step up their game because they have real plates and utensils, so it's pretty fancy. And I appreciate the jewelry prizes and items that they were able to share with the community. So, good job. Thank you, chief, and your department.
Thank you. I heard it was a well-put-on event. I wanted to give some notice to our community because on Saturday, November 4th, the Pony Express is coming to Florence, Arizona. So it is on a Saturday. If you bring your stamped envelope, come on out in front of Town Hall. They'll ride up in their horse with their mail bags. I know Councilmember Wall has been there prior, and if anybody else has, please just jump up and interrupt me right now. I know many of us have. And it's amazing for the kids because their letters get mailed back to them, so it's an exciting time. It allows them to relive history, and we are rich in our history in our town. Also, on October 31st, we have some great events planned, so please make sure to check out our Town of Florence website. We have the Halloween Festival, and prior to that, we have Make a Difference Day. So if you'd like to reach out to Brian Hughes, he'll be happy to put you in contact with ways that you can help. All right. We are going to be adjourning to an executive session this evening. We will adjourn from this platform afterwards, so if you're still here, we'll see you then. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.